I will call the meeting to order Tuesday, January 7th at 9:00 a.m. And we will begin with a round of introductions. I'm Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Gabe Shepherd, Commissioner.
Curry County Council.
Rachel McEnney County Administrator.
And we will move to those in the room. If you'd like to introduce yourself.
Chris Perry.
Aaron Perry.
Howard BFC.
Greg Mann, County Comptroller.
Anna Quaid, Board of Commissioners.
Laura Kaczynski, Board of Commissioners.
The Craig Assistant Control Administrator.
Erica Milo, Board Reporter.
And we will move to those online who would like to introduce themselves.
Jeff Van Arsdale, Ben Candy Sheriff.
Sheriff, we cannot hear you.
Of course not.
Just wait.
Sheriff Jeff Van Arsdale, everyone. Is there anyone else online that would like to introduce themselves? Seeing none, we will move on. Next on the agenda is the election of the 2025 Board Chair and Vice Chair. Do I hear a motion for either or both?
I nominate Commissioner Wise for Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion for Vice Chair?
I nominate Commissioner Malone for Vice Chair.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right, are there any changes to the agenda today? Hearing none. Any announcements? Just that it's the first board meeting of the new year. Happy New Year, everyone. Moving right along to comments from the public. Is there anyone signed up for public comment in the room? Okay, thank you. And I have Chris Perry. Come on up to the front, sir. And when the mic is on, it's red like this. Yes, there's a little button that you press and it turns red when it's on, which is kind of counterintuitive. We could make copies, but if you need one, you can have that one. Okay, well, we'll make. Sure. And we will stick to three minutes on the clock. Okay, let's see how it goes. And then sometimes you have to get kind of close to the mic as well.
Benton County Commissioners, we've made contact with various Benton County personnel, including yourselves, both verbally and through emails concerning the properties at 26,360 Shady Oak Drive in Monroe. We were told by Benton County Planning that this mistake originated in 2006 from an unlawful partition that was apparently overlooked by the people involved at that time. Then 17 years later, that unlawful partition allowed the two unlawfully created units of land to slip through the cracks and sell in 2023. The unlawful partition must have been buried pretty deep to avoid the scrutiny from the county, the realtors, and the title companies at the time these two individual deeds sold separately in 2023. The county allowed the sale of deed 2023 640 650 in November, yet it had no road frontage, did not meet the minimum lot size requirement. We had purchased deed 2023 641 390 in December. This mistake was not discovered till after the purchases. However, before we purchased our property in December 2023, we had a pre-development meeting with Benton County Planning to verify the land was buildable. And we were told by the Planning Department that it was buildable. The Planning Department was evidently wrong, did not have all the facts. We were later told by Commissioner Zan Agarat that things like this happen because the county data systems across departments historically have been completely separate from one another. In my eyes, realtors and title companies rely on that information to be correct. Solid communication between county departments is crucial for that to happen. Zan also mentioned that the county has now ruled this as a civil matter versus a land use issue, which just pits two landowners against each other. I don't see how it can be a civil matter when Benton County allowed this to happen. Who holds them accountable? So it's been just over a year now, and we've tried many different paths to find a solution to this situation with no success yet. All this to correct a problem that was no fault of our own. We've spent an excess of $25,000 just on survey and attorney fees so far trying to put these mistakes behind us. So my question is, so do the commissioners know if the previous emails that I've sent out mentioned above have spurred any of the county departments to actually sit down and discuss this situation to find a fair solution to this dilemma that the county has put us all in? We did have another idea. We were looking at Oregon Statute 92.176, Section 1, Validation of a Unit of Land Not Lawfully Established. Since we satisfy both A and B in that Section 1, is it possible that this might be a door that the county might be able to use to make us a legal, buildable property? Please, we are looking for answers to find a feasible solution so as to be able to get on with our lives. We really don't understand why we are bearing the brunt for mistakes made in the past in a situation we did not cause. We had thought we finally found a suitable place to build a small retirement house, but instead we're stuck in limbo, living in our camper on hold until this gets resolved. One can actually say Benton County has made us homeless. Is it possible we can get a meeting together with the county to discuss a resolution to this clerical mistake made in 2006? Not by choice, but if Benton County will not move to rectify and help us rectify this problem, our only recourse left is to file a judicial partition, which will force the sale of the entire property and leave a second property owner homeless. Please, let's find a solution together. Any other details, information, or questions that can be reached? We can, either one of us can be reached at this email below.
Thank you. Are there any, is there anyone else in the room that would like to provide public comment? Hearing none, is there anyone online that would like to provide public comment? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on. Next up on the agenda is the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our work session. First up on the agenda, I have floodplain program update with Toby Lewis. I do not see her yet. Thank you.
We can move on while we try to locate Toby.
The next thing would be Community Health Center's endorsement of Bill LC 2423, and I do not see anyone from unless they are online. So maybe we should take a five-minute break and.
Commissioner Wise, we could always recess and you can jump into the other meetings we have.
Sure.
Service districts and the health board.
Thank you for the helpful suggestion, County Council. I will recess this meeting and we will move into the board meetings. Why am I blinking on the service districts? Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, well, I will call the Benton County Board of Health Governing Board meeting to order. Since we do not have a chair as Vice Chair, I will take a nomination for the 2025 Chair and Vice Chair. Pardon me, we do have a chair. My script says that I'm calling it to order. Are you the Chair of it? Nonetheless, do I have a motion for Chair or Vice Chair?
I nominate, I nominate Commissioner Wise for the position of Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Nominate.
Go, please, sir.
I nominate Commissioner Malone for the position of Vice Chair.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there any other business?
I'm moved to adopt the consent calendar. That has the minutes and the orders.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And with that, I will close the Benton County Board of Health Governing Board meeting. And with that, I will open the Contract Review Board Governing Board meeting and take nominations for a Chair and Vice Chair, and I believe, can we do that in one motion?
You can, yes, if you prefer.
Sure.
All right, well, then I nominate, or I move to, I nominate Commissioner Wise for Chair and Commissioner Malone for Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Let's see, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any other business? Hearing none, I will adjourn the Contract Review Board Governing Board. And I will open the Local Review Board Governing Board. Is there a motion for Chair and Vice Chair?
I move to, I move to appoint, we'll go with that for this one. Commissioner Wise Chair and Commissioner Malone Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business? Hearing none, I will adjourn the Local Review Board Governing Board, and I will open the 911 Emergency Communications Services County Service District Governing Board. Do I hear a motion for Chair and Vice Chair?
Move to, I move to make Commissioner Wise Chair and Commissioner Malone Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business? Hearing none, I will adjourn the 911 Emergency Communications Services County Service District Governing Board. And I will open the Alpine County Service District Governing Board. Do I hear a motion for Chair and Vice Chair?
I move to nominate Commissioner Wise for Chair and Commissioner Malone for Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Do I hear a motion for the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business? Hearing none, I will close the Alpine County Service District Governing Board, and I will open the LC County Service District Governing Board meeting. Do I hear a motion for Chair and Vice Chair?
Move to nominate Commissioner Wise for Chair and Commissioner Malone for Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do I hear a motion for the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business? Hearing none, I will adjourn the LC County Service District Governing Board meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Did we do, did we do the agricultural extension? Okay, we, I think we missed the Agricultural Extension Services County Service District Governing Board. That was the, the second one.
It is not on my cheat sheet here, so we'll do that one last. How about that?
Sounds great.
So for now, we'll move on. I will open the LC Human Services County Service District Governing Board meeting. Do I hear a nomination for Chair and Vice Chair?
I nominate Commissioner Wise for Chair and Commissioner Malone for Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Do I hear a motion for the consent calendar?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business? Hearing none, I will close the LC Human Services County Service District Governing Board meeting, and I will open the Cascade View County Service District Governing Board meeting. Do I hear a motion for Chair and Vice Chair?
Move to nominate Commissioner Wise for Chair and Commissioner Malone for Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do I hear a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business? Hearing none, I will close the Cascade View County Service District Governing Board meeting. And I will open the Benton County Agricultural Extension Services County Service District Governing Board meeting. Do I hear a motion for Chair and Vice Chair?
I move to, I move to nominate Commissioner Wise for Chair and Commissioner Malone for Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do I hear a motion for the consent calendar?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business? Hearing none, I will close the Benton County Agricultural Extension Services County Service District Governing Board. And I will open the Hidden Valley Domestic Water Supply County Service District Governing Board. Do I hear a motion for Chair and Vice Chair?
Move to nominate Commissioner Wise for Chair and Commissioner Malone for Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do I hear a motion for the consent calendar?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business? Hearing none, hidden, I will close the Hidden Valley Domestic Water Supply County Service District Governing Board. And I will open the County Service District Governing Board for Library Services. Do I hear a motion for Chair and Vice Chair?
I move to nominate Commissioner Wise for Chair and Commissioner Malone for Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do I hear a motion for the consent calendar?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business?
No.
With that, I will close the County Service District Governing Board for Library Services. And I will open the North Albany County Service District Governing Board. Do I hear a motion for Chair and Vice Chair?
I move to nominate Commissioner Wise for Chair and Commissioner Malone for Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do I hear a motion for the consent calendar?
Moved.
Second.
All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business?
No.
With that, I will close the North Albany County Service District Governing Board, and I will open the South Third County Service District Governing Board. Do I hear a motion for Chair and Vice Chair?
I move to nominate Commissioner Wise for Chair and Commissioner Malone for Vice Chair.
Again.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Motion for the consent calendar.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. With any other business? With that, I will close the South Third County Service District Governing Board.
It was in a different order, so you got it.
Got it, okay. All right, well, with that, I will return back to our regularly scheduled board meeting. And next up, we have Toby Lewis with the Floodplain Program Update. Welcome, Toby.
Morning. Thank you. So. Here. Sounds like we've had, I just got back a couple of weeks on vacation, so it sounds like we had some wet weather, but no significant flooding. No dwellings or structures have been reported so far as being flooded, so that's a good thing. When we do have reports of flooded houses or businesses, then we need to evaluate those for how much damage occurred and whether or not it's a significant amount of damage to know whether they can build back to the same standards or whether they need to build back to their, to the current county standards, because not all structures are built. When they're built before before 2011, they may not be built to current county standards, so I'm glad we didn't have any, don't have any reported structures yet. So today's, today's update is just a, covers a few highlights of activities that have been going on in the floodplain program this last quarter. Let's see. First up is our community rating system. Quick overview of the community rating system is a program that Benton County participates in. The goals are to reduce and minimize the hazards of flood-related damage and impact to people and structures, help make sure that people are able to get back to their daily lives as quickly as possible after flood events and have minimal impact. Some of the ways that we do that are outreach to residents. We do an annual mailing. That's the floodplain outreach item that's marked up there. We sent that out earlier this year. It's a tri-fold brochure. We also have these available out front and lobby and upstairs and a couple of other places. So this mailing goes out once a year to all people who own property in Benton County that unincorporated Benton County, where the land is in a floodplain. A couple of other ways that we do that is we have some information on our website. We also provide one-on-one conversations with property owners about their flood risk, floodplain requirements for construction, as well as insurance options, and where to go to get more information about flood insurance and the benefits of that. We also have a, several construction standards that are aimed at helping make sure that structures are able to weather flood events without, with minimal damage, so floodplain or flood venting in foundation walls, elevating floors to 18 inches above the flood elevation, that kind of thing. So the other bullet that's on there is the recertification. So once a year, we go through an audit process and that we submit our verification in October and then takes a couple of months and then we get our, our response back on that and we passed again with, didn't have any issues on that. It was approved in December. We submitted three elevation certificates, so elevation certificates, when we submit them, document that a structure has been finished, like a dwelling has, is all finished, it's already been built, and everything is in compliance with our floodplain standards. We had one manufactured home replacement. We had one single-family or site-built dwelling replacement and one substantial improvement. And so that's where a house was built before our current floodplain standards were in effect, and they wanted to do a significant remodel, which caused the whole house to need to be brought up to current floodplain standards to protect their investment. So all three of those went through just fine. And then, let's see. Next up is the federal FEMA Federal Flood Risk Management Standard, FFRMS. FEMA does love their acronyms. This, this standard affects a number of federal programs. The most notable and that's been most talked about recently is the Housing and Urban Development, Housing and Urban Development Standards. So as part of the compliance with the Federal Flood Risk Management Standard, the Department of Housing and Urban Development adopted a new rule in April, and the most impactful part became effective January 1 of this year for all new single-family homes and up to four-unit residential homes that have federally backed insurance or are insured under the Federal Housing Administration, single-family mortgages. Those dwellings will need to be built to two feet above the flood, base flood elevation. So the floor of the house has to be two feet above the expected flood level. This is a requirement in order to obtain that type of mortgage insurance backing. It's not a local requirement. Our local requirement is 18 inches. So one of the things that the Association of State Floodplain Managers and the Department of Housing and Urban Development have both been encouraging communities is to consider increasing their, it's called a freeboard requirement, so increasing the requirement so that the floor of dwellings needs to be, so the local requirement matches that two-foot elevation requirement. There are a couple of, of info documents that didn't quite make it into the packet, but should be on their way to you if you haven't already received them. One is, they're both by the Association of State Floodplain Managers, so they're just some information about that requirement and about the, where it applies, so that you can consider that. I'll be checking in with, with you at a later date to see if that's something, a direction that, that the commissioners or the board would like to, to pursue in terms of increasing our freeboard requirement from 18 inches to two feet. Just for a quick reference, the, the flood, the, the difference from ground to flood elevation in the county can range anywhere from a couple of inches to five or six feet. So we're talking, if it's a six-foot difference, then we're talking eight feet in the air instead of seven and a half. I mean, six inches isn't a lot, but it's still some, and in some places it can be quite a bit, but elevating structures higher than, than the absolute minimum is, does provide better protection. So just something to think about and consider for the future. Next up is, is our lovely recurring topic of the National Flood Insurance Program and the Endangered Species Act. We did submit the Pre-Implementation Compliance Measures Letter as directed by the board to let FEMA know that we are pursuing that habitat assessment or permit-by-permit option for. habitat assessment or permit by permit, uh, option for implementing the interim measures for the Na- Endangered Species Act compliance, um, with the caveat that we need, uh, a final draft of the Habitat Assessment Guidance Document and, um, and that has been issued. To my knowledge, that's been issued, um, but I haven't had a chance to read through it quite yet. So we'll be working on moving forward to see how to get that into our code and get that implemented, um, over the next several months or so. Um, it'll, it'll be a little bit of a process, but we'll, we'll start working on that here pretty quick. Um, co- cooperating agency comments, so far we have commented on eight documents provided to the cooperating agencies. Um, and I believe we are done with those for now. Um, the Review Committee from Public Works and, and Natural Areas and Parks, um, if, those documents are not short, they're, they've been anywhere from, uh, 30 or 40 pages to sometimes 60 or so. So people have been doing a lot of reading and commenting for those. Um, and then the last item up is the Lucky Mute Watershed Flood Map Revision Project. So that was submitted by the Corps of Engineers to FEMA, um, in December. And FEMA received it, assigned a case number, and they've got both of their review teams coordinating on that. So that it will be consistent with, um, the Upper Willamette Watershed Revision Project that covers the rest of the county, um, and hopefully things will, will go through seamlessly. Um, for the other project, the Upper Willamette Watershed Project, the, the flood risk review meeting date. Um, they're looking at potentially the end of February as a tentative date for bringing that information to, um, county and city staff to, to take a look at, um, and present officially to, to South. So, any questions?
Any questions?
The last thing you mentioned was the Lucky Mute, um, uh, revision by the Corps and, uh, you had a meeting out in the Kings Valley area last May.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's what you're talking about, uh. The Corps did something 10 or 12 years ago and, and they got serious about, uh, being more accurate. Uh, I remember something about, there were 200 some uh, structures in the floodplain on the 2011, was that right date?
Yeah.
Something like that. And, uh, what was the, what caused the Corps to um, make a more, uh, accurate map?
Um, I'd been having a conversations with, with, uh, Paul Sclafani at the Corps of Engineers for a number of years. And he had been looking for, and FEMA and lots of other agencies too, but, um, the Corps had been looking at, uh, finding some funding to do smaller watershed, uh, map revisions for flood mapping. And they did, they submitted the request a couple of times. I think it took three times before they were able to get it through and, and approved for that, uh, that grant cycle. So, um, it was, it was mostly just conversations and repeated requests for better flood mapping.
And so, uh, at least in this instance, the Corps was responsive to, uh, comments that, uh, what they had on paper was not necessarily very accurate.
Yeah, and, and I don't think that there's ever really been a, a belief that the, the un, or the sections of our flood hazard mapping that don't have base flood elevations. I don't think there's ever really been a belief that those have been highly accurate. Um, they're not, they're not designed to be incredibly accurate. Um, but the question was, who's going to fund it and who's going to do the work? So, um, I think based on my conversations over the years, both FEMA and the Corps have been very supportive of of revised mapping. It's just been a matter of funding. So fortunately, the Corps was being very persistent about pursuing that funding and was able to find a right, the right combination of um, portraying the art, the request and the arguments for that in a way that was, um, approvable through the, the grant funding process.
And, and it went from 230, uh, structures that were in the floodplain to 35 or something like that.
Yeah, it's significantly reduced. I, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but those sound about right.
And, and I would say the, that was a good, uh, panel that you, uh, assembled and, and was, uh, informational. It would have been nice if the attendance would have been a little better. But there was, uh, decent attendance and appreciate, uh, having the, uh, the meeting and, uh, uh, where we were, um, where we were talking about there in Kings Valley.
Yeah, and, and the county got a lot of, um, positive feedback and compliments from the Corps, from FEMA, Oregon Emergency Management, uh, Divis- Department. Um, I can't remember who else was there, but, but I did get quite a few emails back after that saying that they really appreciated how much effort the county put into making sure the meeting went well. And, and trying, doing the, doing our best to invite as many people as possible.
Oh, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you. Alright, and with that, we are ready to move on to our next agenda item. Which is the Community Health Centers endorsement of Bill LC 2423 regarding Oregon Health Authority Certified In-School Sealant and Screening Programs. And listed on the agenda, I have Molly Perino with Community Health Centers. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for the grace in coming back to this while I made my way here on a, the IC drive. So this morning, I am here, like you said, to ask for your endorsement and support for LC 2423. And that directs the Oregon Health Authority to allocate $900,000 to support school-based, um, sealant programs. Um, there's 19 across the state, of which we are one. And it doesn't, it's delightfully vague how they will allocate this. It says it will be similar across programs, so I don't know if that means we're divided equally by program or by the number of schools we serve. Either way, um, I would welcome these grant dollars to come to our program to be able to support some follow-up efforts for the kids that we do see in school. I'd say about 40% of the kids we see warrant some kind of follow-up care. So this would help us with staffing to support that work, um, to get these kids some extra follow-up care. Um, there's a code for it, which is great. Um, it's just reimbursable at zero dollars. So hopefully that will change in the future, but in the short term, this House bill would help support our program. So I would like your endorsement to put our name behind it and use the dual branded logo.
Alright, any questions?
I, I just want to, and, and let you guys know why this is in front of you. Um, typically, if a department or staff is, has been asked to support legislation, we want to make sure that our departments and staff are aligned with the Board of Commissioners so that they don't get sideways with a desire or an outcome you all would like to see. That's why, that's why Molly is here. And, uh, so you don't normally see these kind of presentations, but I just want to give an explanation for why it's here.
Thank you.
Um, and, um, a couple things, uh, L- LC means legislative.
Concept.
So it, it doesn't have a bill number yet, but
Not yet.
It's started in that, uh, process, and that's, uh, $900,000. What did you say, uh, for 19, uh, programs?
Yes, there's 19 certified programs across the state that would be eligible to apply for funds.
And is that, I get a little quicker with it, we take, and that's 47,000. Um, is that how it's distributed? Everybody gets that amount or?
I hope so. I don't know for sure. I don't know if it's going to be divided by program or by the number of schools served within that program. So that could change the numbers pretty significantly. Um, or at the smaller end of program size, so it would have a bigger impact to us than it would do some larger programs. At this point, I don't know exactly how they intend to distribute, and it would also depend on how many programs applied for that funding. I can't imagine any of them wouldn't, um, but it's, that's a factor also.
And, and I guess, uh, since we have, uh, people, uh, working on advancing legisla- legislation that we are interested in, I guess, uh, uh, keep us posted if we should, uh, if we um, can, can help the process along.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or is someone ready to make a motion?
Um, I'll move. Yeah, I, so I wanted to thank Commissioner Malone. That was actually my question too about, um, the distribution of the funding. And I was looking at section, or subsection three here, and it talks about proportional basis relative to the number of schools. So, um, and, uh, thanks also for doing the math. I, I do my best never to do math in public because then it, there's an opportunity for embarrassment. But, so can you, um, just, uh, restate $47,000? What would that specifically, like, how, how would that money be used by, by the program?
Would allocate that towards somebody to do the follow-up, that's dedicated to do that follow-up work for our school kids. Um, at this point, we do our best to make at least one attempt to every kid that needs follow-up. Oftentimes, that's a pretty fruitless effort. Um, so I would like to dedicate somebody's time to really following up with these kids, making sure that they have, the families have access to resources. We maybe want the resource, or we may be able just to guide them towards a dental care home. At this point, it's a very passive process. Um, if kids, we see kids in our school program, we send a note home in a backpack. Um, I don't know how many school backpacks you've been through recently, but it's hidermas. Um, either if it does make it home or if they are able to interpret, you know, adequately what we saw. But there's a lot of kids that need a lot of follow-up, and I don't think that passive attempt is as effective as we want it to be. So I'd really like to have more in-person touches and outreach to parents to say, hey, this is what we saw. Let's, let's try and get you some help.
Right, yeah, I, I'm always happy when the state gives, gives money. I'm, my concern is that if it is a staffing position, this is one-time monies, and I don't want to create an expectation that someone, you know, of a job continuing on if this money expires. So I'm happy to take money from the state, uh, but I just, I want to be cognizant of the fact that it seems like it'd just be one-time funding, um, and positions on one-time funding are tenuous. But happy to support it today. And Commissioner Malone, you said you had a motion. Sorry.
Yep, uh, I, I move to approve the use of the Community Health Centers of Benton and Lynn Counties logo to endorse LC 2423.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, that brings us to the end of our regularly scheduled agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Alright, with that, I will, oh.
I have my hand, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
I, I just want to say I'm excited that this is my first meeting, first official meeting. Uh, I wanted to briefly state that, um, I saw item 6.1 on the consent agenda, which was talking about scheduling the meetings. And I would like to, at the goal-setting session, talk about some ideas I have for, uh, meetings and how we, how we do meetings going forward. But, um, that's not for today, but I wanted to let people know that I'd like to talk about that next week.
Thank you, Commissioner Shepherd. Alright, and with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 9:40 AM.